Okay, we're gonna call the rescheduled regular city council meeting to order Monday, May 23rd, 7:00 PM. Roll call?
David Paradise.
Nicole Andrioff.
Kirby Moyno.
Tom Marslick.
Sam Solars.
Jessica Bonnewell.
Jared Vogel.
Dan Reamer.
Michael Somerfeld.
Chuck Smallwood.
invocation?
Let's pray. First of all, thank you for keeping us safe and thank you for keeping the road crew safe. Thank you for their attentiveness to everybody who lives on Center Avenue, including carrying eggs in for us at Grace Place. Thank you for how you've blessed this community and let us not forget that we are blessed to live here. Be with us tonight as we make decisions that best serve the people in this community. We pray for this board tonight that they are able to make the best decisions for their families and commitments that take them away to do the work of the city. We pray for all the people gathered here with things on their hearts, questions and wonderings, that they may find solutions together and that we are able to do it without judging one another. We are thankful for all the bounty of spring and all the beautiful ways that you show us your love. Continue to guide and direct us. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag-
-of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any injustice for long. Need approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to go ahead and approve tonight's agenda?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. Approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. Wright County Sheriff's Office. Unless you have anything to add to that? The only question I would have is, would, do you know if, since they put the bulletin out for the speeding and everything on Crystal and First, if there's been any more stoppages or anything like that?
They have been controlling the area. I don't know. I don't know what your thought is. They're controlling stuff that's on radar and they're spending some more time kind of holding that area right now also.
Request for council action, Mr. Charles Smallwood.
Charles Smallwood, 200 Crystal Lane. My hearing regards to the same topic you just brought up. I live on Crystal Lane and there's a major problem with speeding, people not stopping, and a lot of things in that neighborhood, bus stops. I guess with additional enforcement, maybe a couple of temporary stop signs in Crystal to slow traffic down. I know Kirby and I had talked about possibly temporary speed bumps. We tried a lot, real popular, but we've gotta slow this down some while. It's getting crazy. Even during the Highway 12 shut down, we had semis coming through there and they were rolling the stop sign. So I'd just like to see something done.
Do you know that, like I said, I'd talked to actually Sheriff Derringer on Friday and then he directed me to contact a deputy. And so they put out a bulletin to watch for some of that, but yeah, I mean, I've heard a bunch from whether it's First Street, Crystal Lane, Mindy Lane, that people are just, you know, that's, that's their cut through. So they're speeding through and all the problems I think that we had heard about on First Street have now moved over there into much more compact areas.
Yeah.
So outside of the extra patrol that's going on, is there anything else that we want to talk about with, and perhaps to, you know, mitigate some of those issues?
Could we do a temporary stop? Or some speed bumps? I mean, can be something to kind of mitigate those.
Don't know anything about that.
Like temporarily bigger stop signs? I mean, I live off of Emerson and Mindy myself, so I've seen my fair share of people just flying through that stop sign like it doesn't exist. So I get that.
The biggest thing that I could offer is typically when, when people's normal routes are disrupted and they're finding alternate routes to cut through or cut across construction areas. Historically, what we've found is that enforcement makes the biggest difference. My fear with adding some quote unquote temporary stop signs or things of that nature and we can certainly look at it, but sometimes that can increase accidents as well, particularly if you have traffic that's already rolling through areas and it's a, it's a change in traffic control and people aren't anticipating it and sometimes that creates bigger issues than, than the ones that we're talking about. But it's certainly something that we could look into and, and evaluate it.
I'm wondering if maybe a few slow children signs wouldn't be such a bad idea in addition to anything else you have.
Is there anything from the fire department side that you see might be able to help but not cause you guys any more issues for emergency vehicles?
No, I'm in line with Jared. Really, this is about the enforcement and just getting the squad cars out there. People do have to realize too that they may appear to be speeding, but a lot of times they are not. Thirty miles an hour is very fast in that short stretch and if you're going 30 miles an hour, there's nothing that we can do as far as enforcement action goes. If you're putting in temporary speed bumps, temporary stop signs, you're gonna create either more violations or accidents like Jared said. And that's something that we would have to deal with as well. So it's just a matter of getting out there and showing the colors and stuff, but I like this work kind of coming down.
Do you know what times of day that they're doing the extra enforcement? Cause I think it'd be more beneficial in those early school hours when they're getting on the buses and the, the rush home from, from work at the four to six o'clock timeframe?
It's just when the deputies have time to get out there is all that it would be. So we have a town car from 10 o'clock until 2 o'clock, so it's gonna generally be between those hours when somebody's out there. 10 a.m. to, yeah, 10 a.m. to 2 a.m.
Is there any more discussion on the speeding issue and such on those roads? Okay. City Council?
The special council meeting, fire department meeting, Montrose Day meeting, Montrose Day beer bust fundraiser and concerned citizen after the storms.
Special council meeting, park and rec, Montrose Days committee, city cleanup and the beer bust as well.
Special counsel, Highway 12 safety, a citizen request in town. I think that's it.
Let's see, we had a couple of engineering meetings, several meetings of the county commissioners, EDA, meeting with the public works director. We had a Wright County Economic Development Partnership meeting at Craft Pattern, special counsel meeting, a meeting to discuss the park shelter and personnel committee.
Forgot we had that EDA meeting last month too.
Special counsel cleanup days, volunteered at MESI's carnival and planning and zoning.
Fire Department?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, the first item is the activity report for April. Nothing really too much going on to the most part, nothing really important to answer some questions. Next item on the agenda is need authorization to replace our garage door openers. Cost is gonna be around $700 for five of them. I already have one replaced, so I'm just looking for an authorization to purchase any of those installed.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of five new garage door openers and seven remotes. The total of $700 through JLR Garage.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0.
Next item is I need authorization to submit 2022 DNR matching grant. I will be putting it in for it again this year. It's a $5,000 grant, which is matching 50/50, so we have to use not for 2,500 and the DNR would in turn give us $2,500. So just looking for authorization to submit for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the 2022 matching DNR grant.
I'll second.
What, what can you use that DNR grant for?
Equipment and supplies, kind of geared more towards wildland firefighting, obviously. So we always try to put some into wildland firefighting gear and we get some nozzles or holes or stuff like that as well.
Stole my question. Further discussion? Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Vote yes. Motion passes 5-0.
Next item is just review and approve the 2021 annual report. My pleasure again to bring this report to you guys. Meat and potatoes of it is on page 12 and 13 where we go over our stats and stuff. We did have a record break in the year, 334 total calls. We also wrote a few other records which I mentioned through out there. With that, I'm just looking for approval to get that approved so I can share it with township and get it posted on just the website.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2021 annual report. By the way, you did a good job on that, as always.
Second. Further discussion? Vote yes. Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, do you have to go answer that call?
You're good.
Nope.
Okay. EDA?
Hey, we had our meeting, EDA meeting, April 19th, discussed several of the developers that are continually the work toward land development in the area. We discussed the preserve, we discussed the Lumberman Industrial Park, third edition, some potential there that hopefully will come to fruition. We also discussed with the Montrose Chamber of Commerce, working better with the EDA to attract businesses by using the existing businesses to propagate additional retail and any type of manufacturing business that we could possibly get in the city.
I know we had some light discussion, but did we look at all at putting up some signage on Highway 12 for available?
There, I mean, there is signage on 12. The developer has stuff out there about who to contact if people are interested. I don't know if you want to put additional signage, like?
It, it just came to mind because I had saw that in, in the city of Rockford, they had the, the banners up on the side of their road saying contact. They had it their city hall, but that they had available industrial lots and whatnot for sale, so. Planning and zoning?
Yeah, in the May 18th meeting, we discussed the fence ordinances. Staff and a few residents have been inquiring and the staff and the commission would like to do a blanket change to kind of relax the code and make it fair for everyone. Mr. Kermit suggested bringing a draft ordinance to the June 8th planning and zoning meeting for review and we scheduled a public hearing for the June, or the July 13th 2020 meeting.
Are there any questions about planning and zoning? Park and Rec?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The May 5th park and recreation minutes are included in your packet. It was mostly just an introduction meeting to get the introductions between the new commission members and kind of introduce them to what Park and Rec is and they did make recommendations for appointments to Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary, which is the second item on the agenda under Park and Rec tonight, to get those recommendations approved.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation for appointments of Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary for Park and Rec.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. Anything else for Park and Rec, Jess?
Um, no, I'll just read who all those nominations were. I guess I didn't bring their names. The Chair is now Dwayne Isle, Vice Chair is Toby Nelson and Secretary is Kayla McCloskey.
City Engineer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First item on your packet this evening is pay estimate number two for the downtown Phase One Improvement Project, payment to Keighley Underground in the amount of $405,641.91. Happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the, the pay estimate.
How are they progressing with Phase One?
Actually, both phases are going really well. The detour of Highway 12 was finished and the patch actually looks really nice, so I was pleased with that.
It's pretty smooth too. I was expecting a bump. It's not too bad.
Yeah. So no, they're progressing well. I, I think the, well, hopefully we can continue to get some dry weather so that they can continue digging.
Well, it's not gonna be dry Wednesday, so.
No.
Did you need a motion to accept that? Okay. I'll make a motion for the pay estimate of $405,641.91.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0.
Thanks, Council. The next item in your packet is actually pay estimate number one for the Phase Two of the Downtown Improvement Project. That pay estimate is for Northdale Construction and the amount is $328,736.78. Progress is also moving well on that project staying on schedule, even, even though we do have the reasons, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment estimate number one for Phase Two of the Downtown Improvement Project.
I will second.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Marslick?
Yes.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. The third item in your packets this evening is related to a culvert on Center Avenue South. During the process of coordinating detour and everything associated with the Highway 12 detour and the project, staff was approached by the owner of the mobile manor and brought to our attention a failing culvert underneath Center. And ultimately, we did observe that there are, does appear to be some deterioration and holes associated with that culvert. And as a result, we obtained some pricing from the Phase One contractor, since they're in town, to save some of the costs associated with mobilization and things of that nature. We had in the, in the packet, prior to the council deadline, we had estimated that cost would be 20,000. We did hear back from the contractor today. We were off by 3,000, so 23,000 is the, is the cost associated with that. Obviously, the detour for 12 is down and they still do have some signage, but they'll need to, need to get that put back up so that if council decides to move forward with a culvert replacement, then we can still maintain access for the, for mobile manor through the backside and stuff. So that's ultimately what that is, but we have verified that the culvert, regardless of whether it's replaced now or in the future, it definitely is in a condition that deserves repair and replacement, so.
How long would this additional Highway 12 closure be?
I would anticipate that they could get that pipe in and within a couple of days. I don't know that it would be, it won't be closure, I'm sorry, Highway 12 will not be closed.
You're just detouring the mobile manor out?
Yes.
Just the entrance for the truck.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Highway 12 will not be closed. But in terms of the schedule to get that, that culvert in, I would anticipate a couple of days and then they would likely get it back up to gravel. I don't know that they would bring a crew in just to pave that spot. It might be gravel for a little while until they're paving over on the first part of Phase One.
Makes sense.
So.
With the, now that underneath Highway 12 has been improved for, for flow, would this put extra strain on, on the, the culvert down by the mobile manor then?
Well, so the, I think what you're referring to is the pipe that we're installing as part of the Phase One project and that we just got done with underneath Highway 12 is a larger diameter than existed previously. So there will be additional volume that goes through there, but that, that ditch and just based on the elevations and we call it the overflow, that would be supported by this ditch and by this culvert, so. But there will definitely be more volume coming through there because it is a larger pipe.
What would your professional recommendation be? To do it now or to wait?
The pipe definitely needs to be replaced. I think in terms of cost, I don't know that doing that as a standalone project would be any, any cheaper, honestly. We're gonna be, they're gonna be digging that, that pipe in, that outlet to the ditch and essentially they're gonna be right there. To re-mob an entire crew plus batuminous and gravel and all that stuff would be, this number would be higher if, if we did it later. But it's certainly an option, but it would be higher.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it only makes sense to do it now.
When would they be able to start replacing it? Like how soon would they be able to?
I would anticipate that they'd probably do that at the same time as they, they do the storm sewer there, so. I know we have a meeting coming up tomorrow. I could ask them, but I think, I think they're really focusing on getting some of these utilities in on the first phase of Phase One so that we can keep building streets and getting them back to gravel and hopefully get some curb and gutter. So it might be a couple of weeks to a month before they get there. But that'll allow them time to get the pipe that's needed and supply chain has been struggling, so.
Okay, well then I will make a motion to go forward with and approve the culvert replacement on Center Avenue South for a total of $23,000.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0.
Mayor Council, the fourth item on the agenda is from, is regarding the pedestrian lighting that we've discussed as part of the Phase One and Phase Two projects. We've been coordinating with Xcel Energy. We've obtained some pricing for those, those improvements. One thing I did want to point out is initially when it was contemplated, we did have some lights, pedestrian lighting that is identified on the west side, on the west side, but as we reviewed it and Xcel looked into it deeper and actually got into a preliminary design phase, they indicated that there were too many conflicts with the overhead utilities and that's why the, the diagram that you see in your packets this evening identifies streetlights on the east side of Center Avenue only. All the, the streetlights or pedestrian lighting, I guess more appropriately termed, on the south side of the tracks do include the outlets as requested by council at our previous discussion. The ones on the north side do not and you can see those along First Street North as well in that map. Ultimately, there's a total of 16 acorn pedestrian lighting fixtures, with six on the north do not have receptacles, with 10 on the south do. Xcel has indicated that they require some payment upfront so they can procure the materials and they're anticipating, I believe it's a 12-week, 12 to 14-week lead time for the materials and their estimated pricing for the work is $146,370. And with that, council, I'd answer any questions that you might have regarding the pedestrian lighting improvements.
Is there any questions for Jared?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the $146,370 for all of our lighting.
I will second.
Further discussion?
Do we know the clearance requirement between the lights and the?
Lights and wires?
Yeah.
Out of my head, I don't. I know that was a huge concern for Xcel.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I think it'll be good to have them on there. It's pretty dark at night, so. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Just a couple of updates for council. We did receive quotes for the Forest Creek Trail. Those will be on your next meeting agenda. Also at your next meeting, we'll be providing you with information regarding the findings or the, the water system. So those are two items that'll definitely be on your next agenda. With that, Mayor Council, I'll pan for any questions that you might have.
One thing I got for you, Jared. One of the concerns we had after the two big storms that came through, 202- 202 pheasant run, I actually received an email of flooding and looking at kind of their backyard and, oh, there's no access for where that water can go. So I was actually out there about five days after those storms. Probably about 15-foot by 100-foot long, this patch, you step on it even five days afterwards, you're, you're sinking into the ground. So I know that they're kind of, the homeowners there are kind of wondering what is, if anything, we can do. I know Dan was on that email and we talked a little bit, but wondering if we can get your team out there to kind of look at that area and give an assessment of what the next steps could be.
Yeah, absolutely. We can, we can schedule a meeting with the property owner probably next week and get out there and take a look at it. And I do know that based on the grading in that area, I know that it's pretty flat. So I, what you're telling me today isn't super surprising to me, but we'll certainly get out there, take a look at it, and see what, if anything, we can do to improve the situation.
Perfect. Any other questions for Jared? Public Works?
Mayor Council, I have for you two bids on a new plow truck chassis. They are way out, so I'm trying to get ahead of the ball here, but I got one, one, this is just for the chassis. Now, this is no equipment on the truck. One from Boyer Ford and Western Star at $125,016. And then one from Momentum Truck out of St. Cloud for the same exact truck for $141,000. If we order this now and you guys approve this tonight, it's still a long ways out because of COVID. We have a couple trucks that need to be replaced. It's just, it was a little bit lack of maintaining equipment or looking ahead, but I'm just trying to get on top of the ball there. I know there was discussion on using some money from that garbage fund that you guys transferred to general fund for this. The other quote is for the attachments on the truck. The reason why we want to stay with the Western Star is because we have one. We like it a lot. I would like to have the whole fleet the same truck. So you could jump around from truck to truck and not have to like relearn. The second part of that quote is Towmaster, which is in Litchfield, who puts the attachments on. And that's who did our current Western Star pickup that we really like. It's the one Coco or Roy Henry drives right now, if you guys have seen him plowing. That's our newest one on the fleet. The reason why I'm trying to get on the ball on that because those guys are still waiting for chassis from 2020 to show up and put stuff on. So we're looking like two years out, and even if we get this order in right now for a truck to probably be finished. And I'm not sure we have, our orange truck will last two years. Hopefully, it does, but, so I'm just trying to get ahead of the curve in that. I need council permission to go ahead and proceed.
You need approval for the 125 or the total price?
Well, I want, I would like you to approve the chassis first and then approve the attachments as a second approval.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve ordering the Western Star at 125, what was it, 125?
16.
16.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Vote yes. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the $150,816 for Towmaster to outfit the Western Star.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Well, yes, Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. You're gonna put that order in then tomorrow?
As soon as possible, yeah. Second on the list is approval to hire a maintenance worker one. We had a total of 10 applicants. We narrowed it down to three in-house. From three, we brought two in for a second interview, which was today. And in that interviewing process was myself, Tom, Jess, and Roy Henry Jr. And we would like your guys' approval to hire Ryan Ross. He currently works for the city of Coon Rapids. He has experience already and, and a hiring rate of $25 per hour starting at the maintenance worker one.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve hiring Ryan Ross.
Second? Sorry.
Hope this will get you to finish if you want. That's all right, for maintenance worker one.
Just curious if the new requirement is to have the name Ryan to work in the?
No, he'll be Ryan number two.
Is he gonna fit your team well?
I think so. He has experience. He's, the reason why he wants to work, he would like to stay in Coon Rapids, but he told us it's shorter, you know, like at gas prices. So he lives in Buffalo, he's driving to Coon Rapids, he can drive to Montrose. Our last two candidates were very close as far as experience. I'm glad Tom and Jess were in there to help us narrow it down to one, so.
It was a tough decision.
What's that?
It was a tough decision.
Yeah, it was.
It was, yep.
Good candidates.
Yep. Both very qualified.
Further discussion?
Last year, we got good candidates.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Mr. Marslick?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero to hire Ryan Ross.
Thank you, council. Item number three is just updates. The house is now removed over by the ball field, which got completed last week. Citywide cleanup went very well. I was surprisingly shocked myself. Obviously, the street projects are continuing. The Highway 12 thing went smooth, other than the people that tried to get through, but weren't supposed to. But other than that, as far as the, the construction crew, it went smooth for them. I guess that's all I really have.
Are there any questions for Danny?
I just want to say thanks for all of your hard work on the cleanup, cleanup day. I think it went really, went smoothly. A good plan put in place, so you guys did a great job.
Public Works, my staff did a very good job, yeah.
They did.
Totally agree.
No old business, new business, Montrose Day celebration.
Good evening. My name is Kenny Beck, and as of last night, I am the new Vice President of the Montrose Days Committee. And tonight, we come requesting, as you know, August 20th, the third Saturday of August, is typically the day of Montrose Days. And we would like to request that council make a change to the ban for drinking in the park so that at Beck's Park on that day, we can hold Montrose Days with alcohol in those. Along with that, we would also like to request our parade route and the possibility of shutting down Charity Lane as soon as the parade is over so that Montrose Days is not obstructed. We would also like to request that we use electricity from the power pole by the tennis court for the ban to run on it, and we would partner with Public Works to run wires and, if possible, to have no charge for electricity that day. I do have two options that we have come up with working with the fire department for optimal parade routes, and we are open to alternatives as well, but it would require shutting down some, like Highway 12 for part of the day for the parade. And I do have it listed on both sides if you would like to see it. Option one would be to set up on Highway 12 on both sides and to close the highway as early as 8:30 a.m. From County 107 to Fifth Street, and the parade will be held from 9:30 to 10:30. And then you would start on County Road 12, make a right onto Fifth Street, turn right onto Emerson, turn right onto Aspen, and then tear down on Aspen. And option two would be coming in on Seventh Street and making your way back to Aspen instead. So those are the two options we came up with that would hold some use to the parade. And good approval. We have a meeting set up on Wednesday to move forward with scheduling the parade and Montrose.
I think it sounds good, other than I don't think the county will let you shut down County Road 12. They do, we have lined up there in the past. That is where they do the parade lineup, but they haven't shut down the road. Is that right, Kevin?
No, we usually shut it down.
Shut it down.
Is there a time limit that they allow you to do that, or?
Yeah, but the problem is they don't like shutting down roads more than once a year, and it's gonna be shut down once already. So we may come back issues with the county there if that's gonna happen because it's gonna have to be shut down for the road construction project.
The Sheriff's Department or the County Highway?
You have to pull a permit through the highway department to shut down roads, to get authorization to do that.
Do you have other suggestions on shutting down on Montrose? We could set up on Aspen, but we still, you still would have to come around, or we could reverse it and be done on Fifth, I guess. We could set up on Aspen if we had to, if we couldn't shut down County Road 12.
And then we'll go from Aspen down to Fifth?
Or Seven, yeah.
You're not gonna have enough room to probably tear it down.
Get on Fifth at the end? Well, what if we had them come drive down and loop back down to Aspen? Does it have to be shut if you, just for five seconds to come direct traffic?
No, you could turn them on to County Road 12 and back up to Aspen potentially, or?
That would be a good idea.
Yeah, or even just kind of work around in there. Well, I do, so there are options, but.
I want to bring something up, too. I don't know if there's enough power at that pole to support bands. I think they're 240. I'm just saying, that would be a constant curfew to the city. We'd have to probably get some major upgrade there. I don't know what kind of bands you plan on having, but that's usually what they require is 240 service.
Yeah, since you did one band, it was Diamondback, and I think those would maybe be 240.
Yeah, so I'm not sure what's at that pole, but I'm pretty sure it's not 240. So I, I, we can look at it and get a price, what it would cost, if it's even possible to get 240 in there. I don't, I don't think it's there. Just giving you that heads up.
Well, let's tackle one thing at a time. I'd say we'd start with the parade route first. So if they do the setup and tear down on Aspen with a deputy directing traffic, so when it breaks down, they go back to Aspen, that's possible?
Yeah, it would potentially be possible.
Just to, just to throw it out there, because I hope all of these girls kind of, you know, judge where the, you know, what would you think if we started on Aspen, especially because, I mean, you guys are thinking it's gonna be probably smaller than that, right? Usually, there's 60, you know, floats or, you know, 60 different units in the parade. We're all thinking it's gonna be a lot smaller. But if we loop through the neighborhood and somehow move it back, back to Aspen through the neighborhood, avoid County Road 12.
So take a right at the roundabout?
Yeah, take a right around like Seven.
Go around that?
Round that way, come back up, back through the roundabout north and tear down Aspen, and totally avoid County Road 12.
The only thing I'd ask your bigger floats, too, is if they can make it through those little roundabouts? Because you got two of them you're hitting there.
We drove it the one day. You could cut off if you just, if you couldn't go all the way around with it. You could cut the corner on one of them.
And usually, in the past years, the biggest vehicle that they've had is perp contracted when they bring the semi truck. But they usually asked for a copy of the route in years past to make sure that?
They can drive it?
You know, because if they can't get a semi truck, I think two years ago when you guys had it, they brought a van with a whole line trailer behind it because the semi truck wasn't kind of fit for the roundabouts. I mean, that would be a thing that, you know, they would have to know what everybody's bringing to make sure that nobody brings somebody coming back along that through there.
Would that parade route work for you guys?
We, we can start and stop at Aspen. It would be up, really up to you guys if you're gonna allow us to drive on 12 or not, because if not, then we can rub it through the neighborhood.
You can drive on County Road 12, and we can help you get the parade and stop out. I just think shutting it down again is just gonna be more of a headache than it's worth right now.
I mean, we'd rather not deal with a no later than we do now, so we would, we would, we would start and stop at Aspen because I think it's completely fine. There's plenty of room there. And if we could just get your help then, guiding them back to Aspen, that would be great.
So are we talking the, the big loop and coming right back onto Emerson and then to Aspen? Or are we talking going out onto County Road 12 and then going back to Aspen and breaking down?
I would say your best bet is, you know, line up on Aspen, wherever line up, and as you start there, they go to Emerson, take Emerson down to Fifth, and then turn left onto County Road 12, back up to Aspen. Will help them get turned onto County Road 12 and then turned on to Aspen.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I know there's, you know, those few that would be more willing to, to help out with it. So, I mean, a couple of guys, you know, with, making a pick of, all, all the gang trucks out there.
And just for clarification, Charity Lane will remain open during that whole time? It will not be closed until the parade is finished and back to Aspen?
The, the talk between us yesterday was that we would not close Charity until Fifth Street was completely open because we needed a way, and that's why we had to come up with multiple routes. So we could either start on Seven or start on Fifth, depending on how many routes we needed open for people to get into the neighborhood. But Charity would not be closed until, you know, so if we get them back on Aspen, tear down them, we would close down Charity and they'd still have Fifth and Seven. We also talked about putting signs on Mindy and Emerson, putting signs there so that we could tell people, hey, there's no exit to County Road 12 here with an arrow pointing up to Fifth Street. Then maybe at Fifth and Emerson, hey, your exit to County Road 12 is this way, just so that we don't have a bunch of people coming down Sherry and trying to turn around there just to help out, you know, direct people out to County Road 12 losing Fifth Street. Take away some of the congestion, and of course, post it all over so everybody can see. Because we know, we figured that would probably be a concern with, you know, all the traffic coming through there, so we would kind of, maybe we had to put a barricade up and said, you know, for all these people that live back there, whatever, you know, maybe Emerson, whatever we had to do to secure that so that everybody uses the street.
Is this just a one day? You're doing the parade and everything all on one day?
Yes.
Okay, just wondering.
What time is the parade at?
Right now, we have it tentatively set at, starting at 8:30 with the parade beginning at 9:30. No problem. We're gonna push it later. We're gonna push it later, we're tentatively starting at 11, finish by noon. Uh, so the setup would be around 10.
We changed it, just changed.
So we're pushing it later in the day so that the events can start right after, and everyone will hopefully stay in town and come directly to the Montrose Days and eat and do the activities instead of going home and coming back.
So this is a Saturday event?
Yep, Saturday.
So if you close down Charity, and I'm assuming that's the one, the one we're all talking about, where are they gonna park? On County Road 12?
School.
The school?
Or a church, or whatever is available there.
Maybe there might be some parking in the neighborhoods, you know.
Okay.
And parking on?
Or live out Forest Green, or you know, does it rip or a five piece on five piece in the neighborhoods?
I do have a concern, is any parking happening on Mindy and Cherry and Crystal?
Yeah, there's nowhere to park, really.
Can't get a small sedan through it.
And I know the group has a ton of those parking signs that you guys could probably put up, you know, and, and push everybody back from those intersections. It's pretty complicated, lots, lots of times, so make sure nobody parks in that intersection.
In previous years, where did people park? The school and?
Those schools always are tear down in previous years. I know when we did it through the neighborhood, we kinda came right down Emerson, so there were all the, you know, the side streets for everybody to park.
Also give you a heads up, the school might not be accessible at that point. Um, County Road 12 might be shut down at that point also. Depending upon when they hit these intersections for road destruction. County Road 12 is gonna get shut down for that. Completely.
That's the hard thing right now is, we don't know what's gonna be happening with the road construction. So that kinda escapes me a little bit.
Yeah, and road destructions, whether depending, they could tell us they're gonna shut it down in, you know, July, and if it rains, 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 they'll have to push it to August, so. I can't tell you when they're gonna shut that down and when they're gonna shut that down, but I know those two are toward the end of the, this side project. So, just to give you a heads up on that also.
I think people find a place to park and, and being where it's at, it's walking distance, it's a lot closer to walk to a lot of these other neighborhoods than, you know, even the community center is.
And it's really high dense neighborhoods, it's not really comfortable, so you're not in long structures or the old houses, so it really isn't dead in the middle of houses. Are you talking about parking for just the parade route, or just for the day in general?
I think you're talking about where people park and come to the parade and Montrose Days.
Yeah.
People, like, where will they leave their cars while they're up there? So you think they're gonna park at the church? They can park anywhere, right? And walk over there? Cause it was a hard time to go from the school to here, where people have to stay in town and where that is. Now they're just across the street, now they're gonna be walking, they're gonna walk. Now, but that's a lot, but that's a thought.
Yeah, I mean, really, that is just it, I don't know, for the option, so.
Right.
If we can't get people here, we're, we can't have it, period, so.
I walked here tonight.
She did, she went to the river.
Right.
I go, and I live right by her.
Where is the band gonna be playing?
So we were thinking that the band would play in the parking lot of Veterans Park.
Closest to the road.
Closest to the road, so people are away from the road and people will be on the other side, when they're back to.
So, so the back of the band would be facing County Road 12, and they'd be facing towards like the Red Pillars, and the porta potties would be right where the Red Pillars are there, then the parking lot. So they'd be facing away from County Road 12. So like the crowd, it could be all further man, would not be on the sidewalks or.
Under a tent, or what are your, uh, contingencies for bad weather?
You guys are gonna look into.
Yeah, you can get right now.
Yeah, no, we, I think we do have a tent.
Yeah.
And we know where to run some, if needed, so.
Has, has anybody talked about that neighborhood, talked to the people in that neighborhood that the band needs?
Well, not yet, we have, we literally need approval to do anything at this point, so we can't move forward with it.
Yeah, my.
No, we can't have it.
My concern with the band facing back out is all that sound is gonna be going that way. First, let's take care of the route issue before we circle a little bit further.
On that, we did move the time up for the band, so the band will be ending at 11, you know, right, 11? So that's one good thing, that, that all of us things are ending sooner so that it isn't as late, I mean, it's 7:00, 2:00 in the morning in Black and Blue houses.
And those houses are a little farther away than when it's right in the middle of town here and the band is next door to a house.
Fair enough. Okay, what do you think about the route? Let's start there. There's a lot to take in right there.
Starting from Aspen, going down Emerson and coming out on Fifth and turning back and breaking down on Aspen.
Should we have a contingency in case 12 is shut down?
It won't be shut down there, but.
If 12 is shut down, then you can do whatever the hell you want.
Yeah. Yeah.
12, if 12 is shut down, then it's.
You can park along 12 if that gets shut down.
Park near 12 anyway.
Okay.
I, I like that parade route.
With then the ramping traffic back on to 12, back on to Aspen?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the parade route as discussed, starting on Aspen and redirecting back to Aspen at the end.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
I abstain.
Abstention from Andrioff, I'll vote yes, motion passes four zero one for the parade route. All right, shutting down Charity Lane.
Just a question, have you guys came up with a secondary plan to have the band anywhere else? None?
We looked at all other third options, and this is literally the only one that has electricity, a floor, lighting, and like, is, is actually something we can count on. Because the other option was to have it done by Aspen, and we don't know where things will be in three months and we can't count on it. We can't promote a whole event and have it fall through two weeks before.
Right.
The biggest issue I think that you guys ran into with that was food vendors, having to have certain services that they're being on.
And potable water.
So these food vendors are gonna be allowed to be over in Jackie B's parking lots, they're on a hard surface. He has a potable water source and electricity for them. That was the biggest, uh, problem.
Yeah, I don't know if we actually talked about that, but Jackie B's will be doing the liquor license with the extension of her premises, if everything is approved. So, the, that's why we want to shut down Charity Lane, we don't want kids running back and forth from their moms or whatever. I mean, we just think it's safer for everybody to kinda connect.
Learning from this road project, the sooner you could tell residents around there that that's gonna be closing that day, the better off you are.
I would agree with that.
I, I don't see an issue with shutting down Charity.
You, you have the potential to hypnotize a lot of residents if we wish to mark this road under construction.
It will be. It will be.
Can I just throw something out there? I know you guys have worked and heard, and you're really trying to get this to go this year, but look at all these apps, though, you know, all the apps, tools you're going to do. And I don't know how much money you have, I have no idea, but what about just holding off another year?
I think all of this is done. I think we're losing steam, so if we don't, we're not getting out in the community as much as you would like, people who start forgetting who are even here. And we have a contract, if we don't fulfill it, we're out a lot of money, honestly, with Diamondback. And I think the community really could use a net.
I think the community really wants it, yeah.
I, I agree.
I think they're obstacles, but I don't think they're showstoppers.
All right. Just giving heads up from my experience, you know.
I think Fifth Street's probably a better exit than Charity Lane is anyway.
We have looked at it, but he can definitely go look into it, so.
Well, as soon as Diamondback tells you exactly what they need and how, like, the amps and their services, how many they need, that'd be beneficial very fast.
I can get.
We've never had a band or anything set up in that park before, so I'm not sure if there's enough wattage there to come off those poles.
Is the, is the easy option just having them rent a couple of generators?
Generators aren't cheap.
Generators aren't quiet.
Yeah.
That's true.
Run one with a fifteen foot TV that.
Well, we have, Public Works has a portable generator also, it's always an option. I just don't know if it's big enough, you know, what kind of services they need, we need to know that.
Yep.
I think that's the next step, you gotta get ahold of Diamondback and ask them exactly how much power they need. Cause Montrose Days was always fed out of the shop, and our shop was set up for bands. The regional is stubbed out there, but there's no, no outlets or any pedestals.
As far as, would you guys look into that, because a long time ago, Randy told me that it's, it's already, it's already done.
Not sure.
Just looking into that.
I'm gonna quick and ask you people. I think that for you, I'd always can get around another road trucker. This year, and I always go over here and always do up the T hall. And you go to a one hundred to there, but. That will find a, okay, way, a different way I can get to work, that's probably my plan here.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve. So shutting down Charity Lane.
It just makes sense.
I, I think Fifth Street's probably a better outlet for any of those people anyway, and it's.
Yeah.
Not as tight of roads going down Emerson and Fifth to get out than it is going down Mindy and Cherry.
And Charity, yeah.
Right.
But, and it's only for a day.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, it's one day.
With the large social media presence that I've heard that they have with, with posting their events or Montrose Days, I have no doubt that people will know about it unless they don't wanna know about it.
Right.
You will need to get no parking signs in that neighborhood of Mindy, Cherry, and Charity though.
Yep.
You can't have cars parking on those streets.
We have, we have to like hundreds of them, or. Did you say Mindy, like by the town hall?
Yeah.
When that's so congested already, they can't park there?
Yeah, they need to be able to park on that road, cause otherwise, if you have that open for parking, I think they'll be able to get a truck through there.
So that car is so, we're all in cars and go.
I will make a motion to approve shutting down Charity Lane in front of Jackie B's and Vets Park for the duration of the Montrose Days celebration on August twentieth.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Andrioff?
Abstain.
Andrioff abstains, Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion passes four zero one, uh, for shutting down Charity Lane. Liquor license, liquor in the parks for Montrose Days.
Okay, so the complication comes because they don't have their own liquor license, and it has to be done on Jackie B's premises, and we're working with our city attorneys to draft up an ordinance change to allow that. Cause we asked them if council could just approve, um, doing a premise extension, and they said it's not a good idea, so we're changing the ordinance. I believe I just received a draft of that today, so I'll send that, um, out and we'll have that on the June meeting for changes. But I don't think that they can extend it to the park because they don't have their own liquor license, unfortunately.
If people are drinking in the park, are they going to get in trouble, I guess is where we're at.
If somebody calls authorities, I mean, that would be the only way, I mean, Kevin, what do you think?
You have to lift, you have to lift the ordinance for that day, I think it's on the city signs, no, no.
Well, the problem is, yeah, the, I mean, the council can give approval to have liquor in the parks, but they don't have their own liquor license, so it's complicated.
So e- even though Jackie B's is running it and selling it?
Yeah, cause the attorney said that it's gonna have to be in a confined, like fenced area where the alcohol is supposed to stay.
Well, I believe, we're talking with them, the plan was with the Charity Lane shut down to fence in the entire.
The whole area?
Mm-hmm. So if that's the case, does that change?
I will.
How that works?
I will make sure that that's gonna be allowed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that'll require an ordinance change?
Yep, and that'll come in the June meeting, we should be ready for that by then.
Electricity. So in years past, they have, I know that councils have waived, um, Montrose Days being charged for electricity. If they're not able to run it off of.
It's poles.
The park, yeah, would, would there be? That might require XL, but would there be a way to, um, for Jackie B's to, to monitor the extra usage that they would have by running that? Or is our best bet to just upgrade those poles if need be?
I don't know, I can't tell you that, cause I don't know what the cost is gonna be until I know.
What they need.
What, what's needed.
If you're talking about doing an upgrade, who knows what it may cost at one time?
I mean, CR Electric's pretty good with me, but, I mean, they got a business to run too, I mean, that's our electrician I use. But what if the service ain't even there, the 240's not even there at the pole, then what? Well, maybe they don't need 240, I don't know.
Yeah, I think a lot hinges on what exactly they need.
Yeah.
And I can't answer questions until I got the answers myself, so I don't know what to tell you. Jackie B's has the power to do it, which I highly doubt, but they might. Be my guest and then kick Jackie B's some money, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't have an answer for you on that until I know exactly what they need and I get in that park and look and see what we got.
Outside of the upgrading, um, I will make a motion to waive any, uh, electric costs that occur during Montrose Days in Vets Park for Montrose Days.
On the city service.
On the city service.
You said, yeah, outside of an parade, right?
Yeah, correct. That'll be a discussion at a later time, I'm sure.
Yep, okay.
I will second. Further discussion? Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Abstain.
Andrioff abstains, and I'll vote yes, motion passes four zero one, uh, for not charging Montrose Days Committee for electricity.
So if we can offend it, we would also like to request if the city can please provide, um, or fencing for around the pond as a part for added safety measures? That either Public Works can put up or we can put up ourselves, if we.
Just around the pond?
For around the pond, yeah.
What about the creek? You'd have to go around all of it.
That we don't want children.
Children or people not to be upset.
Around the water.
That's the fun part of that park.
We hope that they'll be in the, more so on the paved areas. But prior to that music starting, yes, everyone will be all over the grass and. You know, our property is right next to that and we, we don't want hordes of, you know, people, you know, spilling over into our land. That's, that's kind of a concern. I didn't, I didn't come here for this. I had no idea this was a, we mentioned. But now that it's up, I, I'm, I'm thinking that if there is gonna be some form of, you know, mass population into that park, maybe the city ought to put some kind of fence between our land and.
There's maybe, maybe a cutoff area over there where they shouldn't wander any farther.
Yeah, like the perimeter area.
That's not, that's not there. We could have some jobs.
At what cost is this for the city for fencing?
We might have enough. We might not. We got some orange, no fencing. I'm sure that's adequate, right? I don't know if we have enough to do all that. I'd have to look. I think what we're gonna know is to wheel it out and see how much we got.
I think the pond is the big part.
Roll, my rolls and rolls and rolls. We're gonna put it up and see how much we got, you know? We might have to buy more. We might have enough posts. We might not. We might have to buy more posts. That's it. You go up and down the hole, around that whole pond and back and then his, his property line, that's, that's quite a bit of fence and a lot of posts.
I, I think we'd have to wait and see how, how deep that, that creek would actually be at that time of year because it, it does dry up at a certain point when there's not rain.
The other option is along his fence line is to do two ropes and side bench instead of fencing. Because his is different than the pond. The pond, we don't want anything to go through it. What, I mean, we don't want anyone to go through the property. But I think if it's, we're worried about adults or kids being safe.
Right.
More so just in the rough, right?
You're gonna wanna get that creek fenced off, cause otherwise somebody's gonna fall down the creek. There's rocks in the creek.
It'll have to be fenced off from Sherry down all the way around and back up to Sherry. Now, I don't know about the other side of Sherry. We gotta fence that off in the Addix property area. It's private property. No.
Say you go off and just kind of make a little jaunt at the little crossing and do.
Anything's possible. I mean, it might, the city might incur some cost there. We can definitely do it. And the cost of fencing and posts, if it, if we need it. And obviously time.
Can the city give the, that money to a nonprofit? What if we provide what we can and we figure out the rest? If it's fifty feet or a hundred feet, up until cost, we figure out the rest. If it's something else, you something and we figure it out.
Sure. I mean, that's always possible and you guys could more than welcome to come and look and see what we got.
Yeah, I would, I would say do maybe a measurement of the amount of fencing that would be required and then see how much fencing there is. But I don't think we'd be giving the money to Montrose Days. I think it'd be, if that was the case, it would be buying the fencing and putting that up. Would that be correct, Dan? Is that what you're talking about?
I guess that's what she's asking, that if we gotta purchase anything here.
But we wouldn't take it with us if it were.
Right, and we would stay with the city. You know, it doesn't belong to the Montrose Days Committee. Um, I think as far as the city goes, you wanna fence that up with orange fence. So.
Was, did you have anything else on your list?
Yes, I do. Um, we were also made aware of some spools that might be available to use as high top tables in the park. And we were just wondering if we could find out and gain access to them for August twentieth.
The spools you guys used prior to Montrose Days, three years ago, were just thrown away at cleanup day because they were rotten. So we have none. They were rotted out completely. Unless you talk to XL.
Yes, you could talk to XL, Wright Hennepin, cause I know Wright Hennepin will give them to local like uh, baseball organizations for, for tables. Um, and, and M and P might even have some of that stuff too, but. So Telecom, XL and possibly Wright Hennepin. For donations.
Does the fencing have to be approved before we leave?
I don't think so. I think that's a safety precaution the city would want to take.
Well, I would just like uh, guidance from the council when exactly you want me to do, I guess, so, until I'm clear. Our public works to do, I should say.
I guess we see how much fencing we have, how much area it would cover, and then we would have to discuss that probably next month if we need to purchase more fencing.
Okay.
My last item is just for informational purposes only, and that is that we will be contacting Republic's communication to request additional garbage cans at our own pos for the day, but just so that the city is aware that we're handling it and we're not expecting anything for it, but just so that there's no questions raised at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I just, I just got a question for you. The city's got one supply mini BIF at that park. Are you guys gonna rent more too? Yeah, okay.
Community meals discussion?
Um, I just have a concern about the stove and the oven that's in the kitchen here. Um, every time we turn the lights on, we walk in and there's usually a gas smell. Um, the oven doesn't work, so we can't really do any baking, so any of the appliances or anything like that, it doesn't work. So Dan, I'm not sure if there's something maybe you can look at?
Um.
To see if it works or if we can kind of get somebody in here to look at it and upgrade it maybe a little bit? Can use it? We are on, um, we put a halt to the meals until August because of construction, so.
Is it broken, do you think, or just not? Is it broken? Is the?
It's just natural gas.
Stove's broken? Oh.
Yeah, well, I mean, when we tried to make muffins last month, it just doesn't.
Didn't turn on at all? Nothing?
Yeah, I ended up doing everything at my work, so, um, and when we do come in, you know, the pilot lights are out, they don't stay there. So if that would be.
I mean, I could get an appliance person in here. I'm not a professional on appliances, so.
Yeah.
To look at, I naturally guess so.
There's, there's enough other people that use it too, that I think we should get it checked out and make sure it works. So that's, yeah.
And um, with the community meals and the pavilion that's going out at the regional park, um, do you guys know if somebody was working on all the kitchen or any of that might go? Is that what you get upgraded and can do? What we need to do on that?
That'd be a Jared question.
The plan is underway.
I don't know what the, I don't remember what all extensively was in the kitchen area.
I don't know that it was planned down to the details of like the appliances and stuff that'll be in the kitchen. It was just, it was an area for a kitchen, yeah?
Right. At, the plans that are being developed for that, that project, the shelter, um, and associated areas. We, in the grant application, this is what council's clear, it was not a commercial kitchen as part of that project. It was a, or a, there's a specific word that was used for it, a serving, serving kitchen.
So it's gonna be a kitchen, the same, similar as to what we have here where we can't really do anything?
Um, I don't think it was gonna have appliances like that, like ovens. When you get a kitchen involved in it, you, um, Tom was with that meeting and that question was asked, so was Jess. You get the word kitchen involved and you start putting appliances in, you're getting the state of Minnesota and your costs are gonna skyrocket. I mean, stainless steel, everything. So you guys have a budget, but that is something that Park and Rec Board can talk about.
Yeah.
So you're, if you want a nice kitchen, your building's gonna be small, cause where do you want to spend your money?
Well, I, I think some, one of the kitchen needs to be out there because you guys will be out there. Archillists will be out there eventually and they're gonna wanna.
Your plan is to rent elevator events and, so I would rent a place if it didn't have a kitchen because most events have food. Ninety-nine percent of them have food.
How far along is the planning of it, Jared? I know that we already have the structure designed, but I mean.
And, I mean, it's, it's still preliminary at this point. I mean, if there's changes that are being contemplated, those need to be implemented soon. Uh, cause there is a deadline of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three associated with the construction.
Could we look at putting hookups for gas and electric in there, whether or not we put anything in at this point? Just so that there's future expansion possible?
Yeah, we can look at that. Um, we'll have to be cognizant of the interior design at that point too and make sure that.
Are we limited because of the grant too?
Right.
Like by what we can put in that building? I mean, are they gonna allow us to have a kitchen?
They have a maximum grant amount. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I don't think the grant is going to. We can certainly look at that, but I don't think the grant will limit it.
Okay.
Just the amount of money that.
So the original plan that was out there though is being changed, potentially?
I'm, I don't know exactly which original plan is being referred to, but I know that the application submitted for the grant not include a commercial kitchen.
I'm pretty sure if you put a commercial kitchen in there, you're gonna have to have that building.
Okay, so my original, you'll get somebody in to look at them?
Yeah. Yeah, I had brought it up a couple of weeks ago too, after uh, somebody else involved with you guys that reached out as well that it wasn't working, so.
Should we make a motion just to make it official that we can do that in case?
For Danny to look at repairs?
Yeah.
Or get somebody.
To get somebody in to look at the appliance?
The Maytag man or somebody.
Somebody, yeah.
And along with that, when we do plug things in over on that way, all of this is kind of, well, it's.
What, what are you plugging in? Truck pots? The circuits are meant to blow for that reason. You're gonna have to split them up, maybe get cords.
Kind of do, but we're looking at different colors too, so just so you know, we're constantly popping pieces. Okay, thank you.
Make it.
You make it.
Mention briefly, just, I, I, I have to, I don't wanna bring up my pleasantries, but it's, it's really not something that's in anybody's interest to have people crossing over into our land, committing miscellaneous or some new crimes that I don't want to enumerate right now. Uh, gosh, the last thing we need is we get sued because somebody gets hurt on our property. You know, we don't want, you know, bad things going on. There's gonna be some form of demarcation or security or something to stop an overflow or, you know, frisky kids doing things they're not supposed to do. So that's a concern for us. But it should also be a concern for the city because the last thing we need is, you know, these kinds of things. So it's, it's kind of important that there's some form of prevention of overflow.
Yep, Montrose Days, they're. They're gonna look at uh, blocking that off so that nobody has access over there.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's really hurting the court.
I will uh, make a motion for Danny to bring in an appliance specialist to check out the stelven oven in the community center kitchen area.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Ms. Andreyov?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes five zero. Thanks Danny. Uh, sunflower field discussion?
Uh, Mayor Moynah, you informed me that um, Mr. Johnny Fish contacted you and said that he would not be planting a field this year. So we need to discuss what we wanna do out there.
When is he coming out to fix the berm?
That's a good question.
All of that was to be part of this discussion of fixing that and.
Restoration.
Well, we do have a contract with him that, that he signed saying that he would restore the land if he wasn't going to plant there anymore.
Was there a reason why?
He said it was uh, just last year had, had killed all of, you know, the, the funding that they had for it. And since it's privately funded, he just doesn't, he, he can't keep up with doing that. So he hopes to get it going again at some point in the future, but for right now, he has to take a step back. Fair enough.
He personally told me that he doesn't want to be revealed because there's not good black dirt on it. There's like this much black dirt and it's horrible. And he said that to me like forty-five weeks ago.
Okay, well, all's I know is what he said to me, which was that the last year with the drought financially took a toll and he just can't handle it.
Yes, he did say it financially, it took a toll, but it really affected him. So I'm wondering, how are you gonna get grass to grow now that the plant has been turned up into the two inches of soil that was there?
I guess that'll be a topic for discussion when we look at putting grass out there.
Will you be killing the weeds that are currently?
I guess we'll see what happens after we get it restored to the way that it was before.
Um, if we were informed when the press went in that we would not be living in a field of weeds, and that's why it was grassed.
Why it was seeded, yes.
Yep, and now when you look at it, it's a sea of yellow.
Yes, and it was something that we had had, someone had signed a contract for two years that they were going to do the sunflowers. And now that they're not going to, we have to look at getting it restored and what we want to do with it further. I know that there had been an idea from a council member to possibly have the city put wildflowers out there, which will help with the bee population and would look nice. But this discussion is for the sunflower fields to be restored to the way that it was and how the city's gonna go about doing that.
The parks are sprayed every year with weeds and they haven't been sprayed this year. That's not what's been controlled before.
Again, we were under the assumption up until last week, two weeks ago, week ago? Week and a half ago was when I was in Rochester, that they were going to be using that for sunflowers. We had not been notified until that point.
That side, but there's still the community area side, there is behind the road, there's around the hill at the end, the south side area. And I don't believe any of the accidents.
They have not been sprayed with two four D yet. We're short a guy. We're busy. It was the last thing on my mind. They do get sprayed every year. Um, we called Howard Lake today where we ordered the spray and they're, it's back ordered. So we're trying to scramble to find some spray and as soon as we do and we have time, we will spray our parks.
Hopefully now that, once, once you have this new employee on, hopefully that'll help alleviate some of those issues. As far as the sunflower field goes, how do we want to handle that?
That's a very good question. It is all weeds in there. I, I need some, something by the council. Do you want us to, when we spray the green park area out there, do you want us to spray that area with two four D also? Where the sunflowers were? Or are you gonna wait for Mr. Fish to come back and restore it? Cause it's gonna be all weeds.
In order to get the rock out of it, you're gonna have to kill a lot, cause you can't find those rocks up there.
It is fill. That's what's in there. It's not black dirt. It's fill. So. Most likely, I suggest we two four D it at minimum. But I don't wanna cause trouble with the contract you have with him either, so I have not personally seen the contract.
Can we have the city, either you, city administrator, or the city attorney reach out about getting the field restored? And in the meantime, when Public Works has the ability to, they can spray it for weeds?
If that's what you would like.
Maybe after the bees pollinate it all, right, David?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
This, what was that? Either that, we get in there and mow it.
So, is, that was my question, then, um, if you can't get a hold of Mr. Fish, is the city mowing that or is that part of the contract? The lawn contract?
No, that is not part of the lawn contract. The sunflower field area is not part of the lawn mowing contract.
Right, we left that off because it was anticipated to be.
Sunflowers.
Correct. The acreage was not included. I'm sure he's more than willing to take it.
Yeah.
But it would be another twenty acres.
It'd be more cost to the city.
Well, I think first things first, we gotta get a hold of Mr. Fish and.
See where that goes.
What it was and then.
If I spray that with two-four D and he says, well, now I can't plant sunflowers in there, because he sprayed two-four D.
He's not doing sunflowers.
He's not planting, so you guys.
He confirmed that.
I just need to be clear what you guys want me to do out there. So, I will spray with two-four D, but it's gonna grow and it's gonna be weeds all year, because that's what it is right now. I mean, I'm gonna have to stay on top of it and honestly.
Want to mow it, yeah.
We got bigger fish to fry. I'm, I'm, I'm not beating around the bush.
So, yeah, that either city attorney or city administrator can contact him to see if he can, when he can come out and restore that at least to a flat area that's tilled. Any other discussion on that? Uh, fee schedule amendment.
Uh, Mayor and Council, um, the engineers and planner and I went through some of the development fees that needed to be, um, increased. Um, there just hadn't been since they did development back in two thousand eight, seven. So, those are changed, and then the other change is the food truck permit license is decreasing. We've had some requests from food truck, um, owners because of the gas prices and everything this year.
Danny? Is the bathroom locked?
No, I was talking about this.
Because of the, uh, gas prices and stuff this year, um, the food truck permits are having, or the food trucks are having a hard time paying for all the permits in the different cities. So, a lot of cities are reducing their permit fees, um, and we're kind of following what some of those other cities are doing. So, we reduced that to a hundred dollars and then the development fees that are increasing.
So, decreasing the fee for the food trucks to come into town and increasing the developer fees.
They were pretty out of date with, um, what other cities are charging, so. More in line now.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh four, amending various development administration fees.
I will second. Further discussion? Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andreyov.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes five zero.
And the second item is just the resolution authorizing summary publication of that ordinance change.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash two-three.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Marslick.
Yai.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Ms. Andreyov.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Open forum? We have one. You could.
Yes.
Okay, first of all, yeah.
You could.
State your name and address at the podium?
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, my name is Zidrot, they're right next to that park. Two seventy-one First Street North, um, in Monmouth. And, uh, the issue I'm addressing now, this, this, this one's easier. Okay, um, I have, I, it's come to my attention, they're gonna try to put a four-foot fence. They tear down our present fence, which actually is adequate for security. We actually like it tall. Right now, it's about six feet. They're moving the. It's gonna be thirteen, the new proposed fence is thirteen feet from our picture window. Now, in this, uh, picture here, I've got a picture of my son, uh, you know, holding up, up on a four-foot board, which is the same, you know, four feet, that's the proposal. Okay, when I'm one and a half feet of raised floor, because all in Minnesota, they're not on ground. They're, they're, yeah, one and a half, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, um, four feet minus two and a half feet from eye level, which is very, very close. But now, they're also, I, it's come to my attention that we actually do have the closest picture window to a sidewalk or a fence of any property in Monmouth. So, you know, when you're, when you're, when you're driving down the road and you think, ah, four feet, oh, that's four feet. But when you're, you know, on the other side of this proposed, proposed fence or anything, you're gonna see, you know, uh, that, I mean, we're, we're a half hour to begin with, it's like, it's a net two and a half feet in terms of eye level. But anyways, um, uh, maybe I should just read this. It just says, um, there is presently on the coast of one side, one side has fits all ordinance, which obviously doesn't fit our particular situation, when properties see two quarters. In fact, these could, this could be a prescription for harassment of crime, but no other case we know of, where we could be wrong on this, can one or more passersby on public property stand thirteen feet of a picture window, uh, in Monmouth and easily see it, since most or all other properties have lawn much larger than thirteen feet between the fence and their windows. Also, since interior floors in Minnesota are normally at least one and a half feet above ground level, this means that the four-foot fence turns into a day back of two and a half feet. This is the eye level. If the city removes our present six-foot plus fence, which is day back of four and a half feet from standing on the side, we'll be stuck in a very bad situation unless the city puts in a six-to-eight foot fence, which would be day back of four and a half to six and a half feet. That would be something inside, looking out.
So, yesterday, I'm, I'm sorry, Adal. So, yesterday, Chuck and I actually went out and, and looked at it, and Chuck being involved with the, the planning and zoning for so many years is kind of the expert on, on the city ordinances, and, uh, I mean, it is, it's, the fence is moving in about three or four feet, um, which, which is already close anyway, but when, when you stand and look, even, you know, there's a cement slab outside of his window that's about a foot off the ground, and, and I was standing on that, and where about four feet would be, I mean, it was, I mean, chest level maybe on me, so, um, I mean, he, he's right that it, it, if somebody were to walk by with the four and a half foot fence, they could, or with the four-foot fence, they could essentially, you know, be just staring in their windows while they're trying to sit there and enjoy TV from thirteen feet away, so, um, I think that at least replacing the six-foot fence with another six-foot fence, um, where it's going to be at would be the least that we could do.
Yeah, we can't authorize an eight-foot fence, because that's outside of the ordinance that it allows in general, but a six-foot fence, you guys could approve that?
Well, yeah, that's better than a four-foot fence.
Yep.
And one more paragraph, it just says the city's plan to put in a sidewalk immediately adjacent to the new shore fence, thus greatly increasing foot traffic just thirteen feet from our front windows, adds much additional concern and much more potential for problems regarding the privacy compared to when we first moved in and now. And due to the fact that the city is planning to tear down the present fence that has afforded us relative privacy, we implore the members of the Montrose City Council, please put yourselves in our shoes and grant us an exception such that we can end up with six-foot to eight-foot fences as a replacement, rather than the fence that's effectively now much more than waist-high, which in any case would be positioned at thirteen feet from our house. Anyways, yeah, uh, thanks for your consideration on this, um, and yeah, I appreciate that.
I'd be fine with a six-foot fence there.
Yeah, he's not, there's no traff, I mean, there's no traffic visibility that he'd be blocking, anything like that there. Um, and he currently has and has had a, a six-foot privacy fence there for a very long time. So, he would just, yeah, would just be replacing what's, what's already there.
Replace like for like.
Yeah, like for like, exactly. You guys want to approve that, um, since it's kind of outside the fence ordinance?
Yes, because part of the plans was that in the construction plans, it was only be a four-foot fence.
A four-foot fence, correct, yeah.
So, we're just in, increasing that in the con, construction plans, to have a six-foot instead of a four-foot fence. But I would make a motion to approve, um, a six-foot instead of a four-foot fence instead in front of, uh, two-seven-one First Street North.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Yeah, um, I would like something written up, hopefully by the city attorney, once you build this fence for him, it's his maintenance at his cost.
Then he should be able to decide what type of fence. If it's gonna be his maintenance.
I believe it'll be a privacy fence, like he has right now, a similar, like a wood fence.
I'm sorry, Jessica, what was that?
Is that correct? Are we doing similar to what he has?
Re- replacing a wood fence with a wood fence.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Kurt, what, what type of fence are we talking here?
The, this, you, you, you have the wood fence now, so the city's gonna replace it with another wood fence. That's what we're discussing. But the maintenance of it would be if you want to keep it in good condition, you would have to stain it and, and everything.
Well, I don't mind staining it.
Is it your fence or his fence then?
It'd be his fence.
It would be his fence then? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Vote yes, Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andreyov.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero to increase the fence height to six feet. Uh, upcoming meetings, planning and zoning, June eighth, seven PM, Community Center. City council meeting, June thirteenth, seven PM, Community Center. Park and Rec, June twentieth, five thirty, City Hall. EDA, June twenty-first, twelve PM, City Hall. Acknowledgements.
I would like to acknowledge the Public Works staff for a successful cleanup day, along with, um, everybody from City Hall, Jess, Chris D., Michael.
I'll second that.
And the council members for taking their time, showing up and volunteering.
And Chuck.
I acknowledge, yeah, all the other helpers, council and Chuck for coming out.
You took mine, Danny. I was gonna thank you guys for that and, and council members who volunteered. Um, and I'd like to also acknowledge the Montrose Days Committee for the effort that they're putting in to even try to put on a one-day event to bring the city together a little bit for one night, to enjoy Diamondback, so. Yeah, I think it's much, much needed. Any other acknowledgements? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Vote yes, Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andreyov.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. We're adjourned.